All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on the radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles is expected, but is not here at the moment. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to convene today. Father, we thank you for all those in attendance. Father, we thank you for those who have made the commitment and sacrifice to serve as elected officials, Father. And we thank those who have come out to support the process, Father. We ask that you will continue to bless this great city, Father. Continue to prosper this city. Continue to grow this city, Father. And within that, continue to bless those within this city. Through it all, Father, we will continue to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise for what's in Jesus' name. We ask it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on October 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 28th through October 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. I'm finished business. Item number 8A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2409 James Street in District 1, Kevin Joel Garrett and Walmart Siding Outlet, Inc. being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on September 4th. What is the pleasure of the council?
That's District 1. She's not here in that way. I think we need to build.
You talked to her about that?
Dr. Toles, I didn't talk to her.
Yeah, this recommendation is to pass, and she can bring it up again next week if she chooses.
Okay, I make a recommendation that we pass it.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 112 North 21st Street in District 1, Christopher E. Ford and John D. Williams and First Franklin Financial Corporation being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in January of this year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 516 Joseph T. Robinson Street in District 3, Claddy Henderson Life Estate being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's James Henderson, 516 Joseph Robinson Street.
Okay.
I got a notice about my property, and today I'm trying to see can I get a little time enough to clean it up.
Okay. So how much time do you think you'll need?
I'm saying Wednesday, next week.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. You're good. Yes, sir. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves trash and debris. Dates back, this particular case dates back to July of 2017. We've had three separate cases in the last three years. We've been to court. We've been unsuccessful in getting cleaned up. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. And just so you'll know, Mr. President, if it passes today, realistically, it'll be four to six weeks before Public Works can get out there. He made the statement it could be cleaned up by next Wednesday. That's great. Public Works gets out there. If it's cleaned up, they'll move on to the next one. Thank you.
Did you catch that, Mr. Henderson?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Due to the length of this case, I'm gonna go ahead and ask that we abate this nuisance, and then it'll give him time to clean it up, and we won't, hopefully, we won't have to clean it up.
Okay. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1411 Fourth Avenue in District 5, State of Alabama, and Possible Rights of Redemption of David K. Green being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed our case in September of 2017. About three months later, the house burned. You can see a picture of the backside of the house. There've been no improvements, no permits, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3331 Madison Avenue in District 6, Polly Ann Hill being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Ma'am, if you would, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Polly Ann Hill Wilkerson, 3331 Madison. I don't live there. I live at 1716 Oak Edston Highway in Aniston, Alabama. But it is my home, and my son has been living there. I think he has it cleaned up now. I've been going over there and making sure he keeps it cleaned up, because he's gotten a letter before. But my husband's had a couple of strokes. I've had a big fall, and we've had things that's just been keeping us from going over there. So now, maybe I'm getting to where I can get back over there and make sure he keeps it. And I think he's got it cleaned up now. I'm going over there when we leave here.
Okay. Ma'am, what is it that you're needing from the council?
Well, I just need you to know that we are gonna keep it cleaned up.
Okay.
And I hope he's got it now, and if he hasn't, well, within this week it will be, because I'll be there.
Okay.
I think, excuse me, Mr. President, I think what the problem, one of the problems lies when we, it's just an ongoing thing. It just keeps on going and going and going, and they'll clean up a little bit, but it'll be back again, and, you know, we just don't want it looking like that.
Well, he's had a, I know what you mean. Don't blame him. And he's, there was a truck out front, so he's got that moved. So I can, I can watch him more now.
Okay, we're, I'm gonna go ahead and abate this nuisance, but he'll have time to make sure he gets us up, you know, before we get out there. But please, whatever you do, just instill in him that we just don't need to keep happening over and over and over.
Oh, I know.
You know, because next time, you know, they'll come and charge him if you don't get it, you know.
I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a vehicle, trash, and debris. We actually filed it in municipal court in May of this year. The owner was, or the tenant was a no-show in court. We've actually filed eight different cases in the past five years. We're just asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 4 Mitchell Street in District 6, State of Alabama, Possible Rights of Redemption of Timmy and Diane Cranford, Statewide Mortgage Corporation, First Family Financial Services, Equa Prime, Inc., and Providence Bank being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our process in October of 2017. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
As the pictures are going around, you can see the front of the house looks pretty good, but the back part's rotted off in the back, and there's a above-ground swimming pool, that there's a tree growing in. That's just a mosquito den in that pool. I've had a lot of complaints about this property.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearings are resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens for grass-cutting work that has already been performed. No council action is needed for Agenda Item Number 14 at 1109 Litchfield Avenue because the hearing has been postponed, and Number 22 at 3500 Madison Avenue because the charges have been paid by the owners. So with those two deductions, we have seven locations. This is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens on property at 1104 Glen Iris Drive in District 3, State of Alabama, and Nimrod Rutledge, care of Willie Howard Rutledge, are the last known owners, and the amount is $196. Is anyone present to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 1007 Hermosa Avenue in District 3. Kimberly Williams and Gary Wood are the last known owners, and the amount is $136. Is anyone present to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 1108 Hurst Street in District 3, State of Alabama, and Jeff Bynum are the last known owners, and the amount is $316. Is anyone present to speak about this location? Okay. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 522 Harrelson Avenue in District 5, Nation Star Mortgage LLC, and James &amp; Jamie Shellnut are the last known owners, and the amount is $196. Is anyone present to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 3517 Georgia Avenue in District 6, State of Alabama, and DeShoner Porter being the last known owners, and the amount is $196. Is anyone present to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 513 Henderson Street in District 6. FNAMP LLC and Tammy Mansel are the last known owners, and the amount is $136. Is anyone present to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is for property at 3328 Madison Avenue in District 6. Jerry L. and Vicki Dale Phillips, care of Amy Young, are the last known owners, and the amount is $136. Is anyone present who would like to speak about this location? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution disapproving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. David Chabani, doing business as Shortcut Food Mart, has applied for an off-premises-only retail beer license at 809 South 11th Street. Convenience stores are not allowed in residential districts, but this business was established at the time the ordinance was adopted and is considered a legal, non-conforming use. However, it is only allowed to continue operating as it was at the time the ordinance was implemented. The applicant has never been issued an alcoholic beverage license at this address. Therefore, the city cannot issue the requested license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. Chabani, as you're making your way up, I'll just, if you could just confirm, I think I know the answer to this, but if you could just confirm for the record whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to this resolution?
Yes, sir. My name is David Chabani. I heard you say that we never had a beer license, but we did have a license three times during the time that city changed its zoning. I was just gonna clear that to you, that we did have it, and I have a copy of yours' license.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I guess we're gonna be here next week. You allow me to be here next week, right?
So, once again, for the record, are you speaking in favor of or in opposition to the resolution?
In favor of, of course.
Okay.
I have no opposition.
No opposition. Yeah. I'm sorry.
The resolution is worded to disapprove the license.
Yeah, I'm against that.
So you're asking that the license be approved.
Yes, ma'am.
You're in opposition to it.
You can't tell how much I know about the law.
Well, we just, we wanted to be clear. Wanted you to be on the record, saying what you intended to say.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So go ahead.
All right. Again, I just like, I've been there 23 years, and never had any problem with the law. I've been doing the business as a convenience store. They allow me to sell everything, but when it comes to the beer, for some reason, we have an unconfirmed thing that is on the store. And I'd like to lift that if it's possible.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, also, the attorney that's representing Mr. Chabani wrote a letter stating that he could not be here today, and he was requesting that he be allowed to address the council at a later date.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to or in favor of this resolution?
Can I add one more thing before I go, please?
Sure.
You see, there is no opposition, and I have 5,000 signatures from the neighbors, and I just want to bring that to your attention.
Okay. All right. Thank you. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we postpone the, continue the hearing next week to allow his attorney to speak to the council.
Okay. We have a motion to continue and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to continue this matter until next week's council meeting, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to continue until next week.
Item Number 24 is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Greater Edgewall 310 Board. This reappoints Ben Reed for a term expiring April 1st, 2022, and appoints Katie Simpson to complete a term expiring April 1st, 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It's a request by the City Clerk's Office of Resolution Authorizing Satisfaction of Nuisance and Abatement Lean on Property Located at 1104 Hurst Street in an Amount of $300. I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just to put this property back on the tax roll, so we're happy for that.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to ask unanimous consent to consider Resolution 606, authorizing consignors for contributions to United Way.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards? Okay.
Thank you, Council President, Council. I'm Kay Moore. I'm Director for Downtown Gadsden. Seven and a half years ago, the mayor and I were standing in the parking lot at the University of Alabama Gadsden Center and looking at our beautiful Memorial Bridge, and he said at that time, "We need to do something there." So this is our seventh annual Sunset Sips event. It will be Tuesday night from 5:00 until 7:00. We will be closing the Memorial Bridge from 3:00, and probably get it reopened about 8:00. That's the normal time. We have a very quick cleanup time after it's over. This is a ticketed event. You know, everything that we do primarily in downtown Gadsden is free to the public. This is a ticketed event so we can continue to do other things that need to be done downtown as well. In the last seven years, we've put up two, or we've had two or three different banners printed. The speakers, when you walk downtown, were provided by Sunset Sips money, and just different thing. We put the money that we make with Sunset Sips goes back into the betterment of our downtown. So I'm just telling everybody that if you don't have your tickets, they're $40 a piece. We only sell 300 tickets. We don't want this to be a, a big, we want to keep it intimate and private and just know where you can, just to come and stand in the bridge, on the bridge. I think that's what people like the most, that the people that come tell me, "This is my favorite event," primarily because I can stand at the apex of that bridge and look out over the river. So if you, if you would like to come, tickets are $40. We don't sell tickets after Friday. The event is Tuesday. I just want to thank Riverview Regional Medical Center, who is our primary sponsor this year. That allows us to do a lot of the things. We'll have Big Sam the Balloon Man for those people who are in attendance. It's funny that if you've ever been to First Friday and seen the balloons that he makes for kids, he can do the same thing for adults, but just tweak it just a little bit. So we're excited about it. The weather looks like it's gonna be great, and we just, we just want to invite people who want to come, who can come. If you need any tickets, please let me know. And, but Friday is our cutoff day for the tickets, but next Tuesday, October 16th, 5:00 to 7:00. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Kay. Remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed, I'll let you go first today.
Well, thank you. I just want to congratulate Mayor Gatten for the reelection.
Thank you.
Nice congenial party last night. Welcome back aboard.
All right.
I just want to echo what Ben just said about Mayor Gatten. He's done a good job the last, since he's been on the mayor, the last 12 years, he's done a real good job. The city's going forward, and I just appreciate him staying with us another four terms, years. And I also want to turn it off to Alabama City. We're having treats on Wall Street on October the 25th from 5:00 to 7:00. We're expecting between 3,000 and 5,000 kids and parents out there. Just come out there and have a good time with us.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Billingsley?
Well, I'd just like to say, even though I lost the election last night, I'm not gonna move out of the city, so I just hope the city continues on its own enterprises, and I wish them well.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Worthy? Councilman Worthy?
I just want to say, we had a Fall Fest block party this past Saturday. We had a good turnout. Next year, we'll do it bigger and better, and I'd like to say hey to Reverend Huff, Andre Huff. I'll point you on the school board, he's here. So thank you so much.
Mr. Echols?
Well, I get closer to not being here every week. After 32 years, I know I'm going to miss it. The people in my district voted for somebody who used to be the chairman of the Etowah County Democratic Party. Most of them are Republicans. So I feel even more honored to say, put me through eight different terms for 32 years. What happened yesterday was exactly what I wanted to happen. People went out to vote, and they made the right decisions. Well, I wouldn't say Billy was the right decision, but I'm talking about the mayor. Billy's done a good job. I hated to see him beat another gentleman that's coming on, but I hope he will work with the council as well as Billy has. I think we've got a good council. I think the mayor has moved us in the right direction. He's stingy as everything. He don't spend the money just wildly. He spends it very, you know, you have to beg him for it. But anyway, I think he's done a great job. I think we've got some great things going. We're going to see this city move now, and we don't need any interruptions. So when they, I read our New Person thing in the paper, all I want him to do is to come on and work with the council and the mayor. That's what he got elected for. And anything else is what's good for the people of Gadsden. That's what we're all elected for. So thank you for many years of, I don't know how to say it, but I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I won't go away until the good Lord says so. And he's been good to me. So I'll be talking to you again once, once or twice more anyway. Thank you for, thank you again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Echols. Mayor?
Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, it was good to have a big turnout yesterday, but if you think campaigning is fun, do it for about six months. It's not too much fun. Trust me, it seems like it would be till about every week, you sort of get a little more war down and a little more war down. And I've been proud to work with Councilman Billisley. He's been good. Of course, I've known him a long time, sold him a house one time years ago. I think I was about 21. He is 40, I'm not sure. That's not right. But anyway, and, you know, reiterate what Bob said, it, you know, we, we get, we got the council, they work good together. Anybody new coming on, we want to work good with them, too. We need to figure out what we want to do, and that's what we usually try to do, and see if everybody's happy. And then we don't need any kind of controversy up here, and since I've been mayor, all the council people I've worked with are all good, and we've just not had that. That's just when companies are looking around at places, if you've got headlines that's negative about your city, they're not coming. And the Sunset Sips thing is really nice. A lot of times when we have companies, or maybe restaurants, or whatever, that's looking at some things, we try to get some of them to come to Sunset Sips so they can see how really nice it is going down. But thank everybody that voted, and I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Do want to congratulate the mayor on his victory yesterday. I'm excited about continuing some of the work that we've, that we've started, so definitely look forward to that. Going to miss my dear friend and, and council, council member, Councilman Billisley, but we appreciate having the opportunity. It's been a pleasure to work with you. We appreciate your support. As far as the voter turnout goes, it was up slightly, but we're still, in terms of turnout, you know, we're still way, way below what's on our rolls, and, and I wish we could find the cure for apathy as it relates to our electoral process. You know, I want to encourage people, I want to encourage people to continue to go out and support the electoral process and participate. That's important. I can't help but remember and think about the folks that have fought, bled, and died for us to have that right, and so it's important. We owe them that. We owe them that to go out and vote. So again, thank you to those who did exercise their right. One quick announcement before we adjourn. Next week's meeting, as you, as you know, as you, as you found out in August, next week's meeting will actually, the meeting time will actually have to be moved back, so we're meeting on Tuesday, the 16th. However, pre-council meeting will not start until 11:00 a.m., and the council meeting here downstairs will begin at 12:00 p.m. And again, you may remember that that's because we'll be required to canvass the results of the runoff election. So again, that, that is the driver behind the adjustment. Okay? Alva, you want to add anything to that?
Well said, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, okay. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Hey, I got a place I can go stay now. I got a place to stay. You renting out?